Good evening. I call the March 16th, 2022 Apple Valley Planning Commission Meeting to order. I'd like to welcome our in-person and virtual audience tonight. The first item of business is the approval of the agenda. Any changes from staff?
Madam Chair, no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Move of approval?
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Deekman and seconded by Commissioner Scanlon. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion without discussion unless a commissioner or citizen requests to have any items separately considered. It will then be moved to the land use action items for consideration. Three A, approval of the minutes of March 2nd, 2022, regular meeting.
Recommend approval?
Second.
Motioned by Commissioner Scanlon, seconded by Commissioner Sandal. Any discussion? If not, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Stand.
Motion carries. Moving to four A, annual business meeting. Four A is the nominations and approval of our approve of officers and we'll turn that over to Brianna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As part of the annual business meeting, commissioners will nominate from amongst themselves for the positions of Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. In the event that there is more than one nomination for a position, ballots have been prepared and will be distributed to commissioners for a formal vote which will be managed by myself and the city attorney. We will begin with nominations for the position of Chair.
Madam Chair, I nominate you, Jody Kurtz, for Chair.
Any other nominations? So then, we don't have to, or we don't have to?
Yep, so since there's no other nominations, you could do a vote by acclamation.
Okay, so everybody vote for Jody Kurtz for Chair. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I should say. Okay, nay. Okay, so that is a motion, or do I have to? Motion carries.
Was there a second?
Was there a second?
Isn't it?
You don't have to have that?
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll drop it to Vice Chair.
Yep.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Paul Scanlon for Vice Chair.
Okay, any others?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Keith Deekman for Vice Chair.
Okay, so then we have to do a ballot, correct?
Correct, yep. So the attorney will hand out the ballots and then just make your vote and then flip them upside down on your desk in front of you and then we will manage it from there. Oh, and be sure to initial at the bottom right corner.
No, we did not, we did not scratch off everybody else, so it's just a minute.
Thank you.
I think the assessment will occur very quickly. So we won't fill the space with any long distance running or anything. I could have, I could have almost done the annual report.
Here they come.
I'm kidding.
We know.
This is a video.
So Madam Chair, the votes resulted in a tie.
How did I know that?
So your options are this, and it's what is the pleasure of the commission? You can do another round, vote again. Brianna's making another round, crossing everybody else out except Mr. Deekman and Mr. Scanlon. We can certainly do that, but until there's somebody that's voted in, the seat would sit empty. It does not go to council or the mayor as a rule to break a tie. Council can if they want to make that decision, but it's not on their floor right now. So it's how the commission wishes to handle it.
Thoughts? Do a revote?
Can we flip a coin?
I don't think so. I think we'd probably do a revote on it instead of keeping it open. Yeah, let's do a revote on it. Everybody good with that?
Well, also.
Someone change.
Is that your pleasure?
Yes.
The commission's. So.
We should have Tim Burke.
Wouldn't you maybe, maybe if some could make a motion second and make an action item on that? To do a recount?
Yes.
Move to do a recount?
Or a revote?
Revote.
A revote.
So I'm going to make the move? You make the move?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, so Commissioner Sandal first make the move, second was Commissioner Scanlon.
And then all in favor?
Oh, all in favor, I'm sorry. Aye.
Aye.
May? Oppose? Okay. Should we move along to vote for the secretary? Or do we need?
I, well, let's enter.
Want to wait?
We can certainly entertain a nominations so we know what we're planning for.
So I can ask?
Well, no.
No, okay.
We, the choices at the moment for the Vice Chair.
Oh, sure.
Is, have to be decided so we know who the pool is to nominate for treasurer.
Understood.
That's.
We will wait.
Madam Chair, on the second round of voting, the majority of the votes went to Paul Scanlon for the Vice Chair.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any nominations for Secretary?
Nominate Dave Schindler.
Anybody else? Nominations? Okay. Dave, do you accept? Okay. Moving along, this brings us to four B.
Do we have to do that acclamation?
I don't know. You told me no before. Do I have to do an acclamation on that?
Yes, you want to vote by acclamation for that one.
Okay, so does somebody have to?
So moved.
Move to approve first? Okay. Okay, do I have an approval? Scanlon, okay. I have a move by Commissioner Deekman, seconded by Commissioner Scanlon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The carries. So this brings us to four B, the approval of the 2021 Planning Commission Annual Report. Mr. Bruce Nordquist.
Madam Chair, the annual report is included in your packet of material. I'm hoping you've had a chance to take a look at it. And we typically go through a presentation and we've come up with a way to shorten that down to just about eight and a half minutes. And, and so I will start that presentation. And I'll start that presentation if I can actually get to it. And it'll start immediately when I open it up. Well, I believe it would. I stand corrected. Hi, I'm Bruce Nordquist, Community Development Director. I'm here on the patio of our newest rental apartment building called Novello Parkside. All cities strive to offer the best places to live, work, shop, learn, and recreate. Apple Valley is thriving in this area. I'm going to share our city's new and improved developments from last year, 2020, this year, 2021, and let you in on what's in store for 2022. Menards opened a new store in October 2020 at the corner of County Road 42 and Johnny Cake Ridge Road. Their new location, a 260,000 square foot store, added 100,000 square feet to better serve their clients and retain jobs by relocating. Novello demonstrates sustainable design features, desirable amenities, and a location with 175 apartments in two buildings located next to Kelly Park. Here you see the theater, exercise, and rooftop amenities. Now you see the expansive patio and pool, a portion of the community room, and a shared workspace amenity available to tenants. At the Apple Valley Transit Station, expansion was completed in 2020, growing daily parking capability to match demand with 1,100 spaces in our downtown for the busiest transit station in Dakota County. Panera is under construction on Cedar Avenue in front of Target. Business at the old location will continue until the new location is complete. A new multi-tenant building is being built at County 42 and Pennock Avenue. Anticipated tenants include Dunkin' Donuts and Baskin Robbins. A photo shares what the new Chase Bank will look like on Cedar Avenue in front of Experience Fitness. Site preparation for construction has started. With the closure of Vivo Old Chicago, Poor Richards, and Ruby Tuesdays, new restaurant concepts quickly filled these spaces as they became available. We welcome Tavern Grill, Cowboy Jack's, Mesclito Butcher, and The Farmer and the Fishmonger closer to the end of 2021. Polty Homes proposed two phases of townhomes at 157th Street and Johnny Cake Ridge Road, with construction of the initial 45 units underway. A 56-unit second phase is now planned. Presbyterian Housing Services is proceeding to add a planned fourth market rate rental wing to the original Orchard Path location on Cobblestone Parkway. Approvals to proceed with construction have been obtained. There are some that will remember the Southport Airport. That area became the downtown Target, Best Buy, Apple Valley Ford, and the area now known as Central Village. At Galaxy and Founder's Lane, Founder's Lane matching the original airport runway alignment, redevelopment of vacant and yet-to-be-redeveloped land continues. Rohr's Company has a 172-unit apartment and townhome development underway called Riser to serve individuals age 55-plus with both market rate and affordable rental options and amenity offerings that includes pickleball courts. 400 acres of active sand and gravel mining is located at County 42 and Johnny Cake Ridge Road. This is the planned redevelopment for a mixed-business campus called Orchard Place, and this drone view shows just how large the area is as well as progress on the initial approved developments. Orchard Place is a master-planned area envisioned to be locations for medical, health, business, and financial services, offering product design, engineering, light manufacturing, and distribution. Locations for hotels and restaurants are possible. Initial demand for commercial space at Orchard Place, developed by HJ Development, will be located between 155th and 157 Streets at Pilot Knob Road. The following businesses are approved for construction or are planned at Orchard Place: Texas Roadhouse, Mr. Car Wash, Newt's Burgers &amp; Beers, Crisp &amp; Green, McCoy's Copper Pint, Punch Pizza, and Chipotle. The city works with developers at challenging sites. The Hanson Concrete Location at 147th Street and Johnny Cake Ridge Road has been vacant over a decade and is difficult to redevelop for new industrial uses given buried concrete debris. Working with the property owner, Scanell, the city partnered to secure a $1 million site prep grant from the state of Minnesota to remove the debris and make the location buildable. These are the approved plans for a 117,000-square-foot Office Flex warehouse that will begin this fall after site work is completed. Sometimes a location is challenging because the present use is no longer continued and alternatives need to be identified. This is the case with the private golf course at 140th Street and Garden View Drive. The owner, city, and neighborhood work together to identify a housing proposal that complements the neighborhood. Single-family homes and townhomes are planned. To be known as Eagle Point, the development offers 27 villa-style single-family homes and 49 townhomes for ownership, with a common lot area on 22 acres that includes about 70% open space and much-needed stormwater ponding locations. The villas provide one level of living as one of the newest and sought-after housing choices to be offered in Apple Valley. Final approvals were completed in August. Another development has been approved and is in pre-sale right now until lender requirements are met. United Properties is approved to develop Applewood Point at the intersection of Pilot Knob and McAndrews Roads. The 98-unit senior cooperative ownership building is planned for an early 2022 construction start. In 2022, new commercial space is planned and approved for 145th and Cedar Avenue. A neighborhood coffee location and other retail and business services is planned. My Salon Suites is planned for next year on a small parcel just north of the Tavern Grill. Upon completion, this location offers startup and established personal care service providers a place to serve their clients. The vacated Menards has attracted a user. Eagle Brook Church plans to transform the retail location to become their south campus. The proposal is being reviewed at the city for a 2022 renovation. A long vacant lot in the Central Village at 152nd and Galaxy has a restaurant-market concept being reviewed by the city for a 2022 construction and opening. Finally, in 2022, after the city review of plans, a sought-after Lund's Byerly's Market is much anticipated at Orchard Place. Apple Valley continues to plant, grow, and prosper with new improvements on the horizon like our single-family and multifamily housing, exciting new restaurants to experience, and our other planned commercial and industrial projects we shared with you. We look forward to continuing to plan and develop in Apple Valley to support our growing community. With that, I will collapse this. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or discuss in greater detail. It's probably the shortest presentation that I've ever done for the Planning Commission on this particular topic. And as it says in the agenda, that there should be an approval of the Planning Commission Annual Report is required by ordinance and it moves on to be received by the City Council.
Okay. Well, first of all, those drone pictures were amazing, weren't they? I mean, that, that was spectacular. Kind of makes us all feel rewarded that we worked on a lot of those things and no wonder everybody's tired from, it's like, we did a lot of work, didn't we? Can I get, or does anybody have any questions or anything on it? Any comments? No? Anybody want to make a motion to approve?
I recommend approval of the 2021 Planning Commission Annual Report.
Second.
Okay, so that was approved by Commissioner Scanlon and seconded by Commissioner Deekman. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The motion carries. Next one brings us to four C, the proclamation and recognition of service of Planning Commissioner Tim Burke.
Trying to get there, trying to get there. Planning Commissioners, I want to capture for a moment the impact and role one volunteer can play if offering service for 24 years in the city. And I'd like to ask Tim Burke to come forward and join. We did this with the council last week, it went really well despite me, and, and it's really to honor and recognize Tim Burke. And I'll pause for a minute because he started on the Planning Commission in 1998, and these are all the major projects that occurred while he was on the commission, and they're huge. They're substantial. They're what built our downtown or our housing, our neighborhoods, and, and so something just has to, to be said. And we're going to certainly do it in a moment in the proclamation, but I have one other slide, and all of, all of you have seen this before. This is the, the 12 keys that guide the vision for the city. And Tim was able to work on those comp plans and provide that guidance for the 2020, 2030, and now the 2040 comprehensive plan update. And you would know Tim as being actively involved and by his own words, a quiet leader. And that helped the Planning Commission establish all of these keys to the city that guide the City Council in their goal-setting every year, every year that we have a City Council goal-setting. These are the outline that the council uses to advance its plans for any given year. So with that, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I do have a proclamation to read, and I suppose I can actually read the, the real version. He brought it in. It's, it looks like this. It's signed by the mayor and the city clerk. And, and I will begin by reading that, and I just have to remember when I move the slides along. Whereas, Tim Burke and Sue purchased a home in Apple Valley in 1981 when there were 21,818 people and raised a family of three Eagle Scouts and Eastview graduates. And whereas, Tim Burke by profession was an advertising account manager in Minneapolis and pursuing a 36-year career when also blundetowed. If you understand Frank Blundetto, this is how, this was his style of convincing?
Yes.
Yes. To apply for and be appointed as a Planning Commissioner in 1998. So when Tim came onto the commission, all of the outlined areas were those areas yet to be developed, and it corresponds really with the, the list of projects that I had shared. Whereas. Whereas, Tim Burke has served for 24 years, leading as vice chair in support of the work of the planning commission and Chair Melander, beginning in 2011, and as chair since 2021. And whereas, Tim Burke served Apple Valley by participating in the development of the 2020, 2030, and 2040 comprehensive plans that harness the aspirational imagination and dreams, shared vision, and oftentimes, complex puzzles related to solution-based, best-practice development, change, and revitalization of a now 53-year-old community of 56,374 people. And whereas, an Apple Valley planning commissioner has a desirable skill set to ethically guide and recommend zoning and subdivision requirements and site plan building permit authorizations by listening and learning from residents, staff, and development partners. And this was the outcome. A very different box of vacant land yet to be addressed, yet to be developed. Whereas, over 24 years, there were 470 planning commission meetings and an estimated 55 annual average related actions to draw the conclusion that there were 1,300 actions recommended to the city council by Tim Burke as a commissioner. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Apple Valley, Dakota County, Minnesota, hereby recognizes Tim Burke for his leadership and service over 24 years in considering plans and making and supporting recommendations that allowed the city of Apple Valley to plan, develop, and prosper.
Thank you.
Nice. I will defer. I do have a couple of other things, but I'm going to give you the mic for a minute and because this is your team, both new and been around a while. And I...
I'm in the middle.
Bergman's just here to watch.
Yes. And I think I could tell by Keith's nodding that he remembers Frank Blundetto in those years. And I sent a copy of this off to him today. I figured he'd get a kick out of it.
Yeah.
But 24 years passed and I realized, as we got together this weekend with my family, that my 30-year-old son doesn't remember me not being on the planning commission. So he said it was a big... He said he remembers all the packets being delivered on Friday afternoon to the house all the time. It's been a great 24 years. It's been a great to be a part of the team. And I hope, if anything, that the fact that I was on it that long, it motivates you to stay on as long as you can. Because I think there is a history that is very helpful. I think a lot of communities end up with churn on their planning commission every year, year and a half, and it makes it really hard on the city staff. And I think it's really helpful that we've got people like Dave and Paul and Keith who've been here a long time and Jody starting a tenure, and you guys are getting started. And I encourage you to keep on it. Not a short time. Keep on it a long time. It gives you perspective. And I think you'll get to enjoy Dave coming in at the last minute, which is, you know, part of the drama. It made it seem like family when that happened. We knew that. So appreciate that. And I want to thank you for the time that you guys have spent on it and the friendship you have with it. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody?
So, a couple of things that we do. We don't need one of these anymore. It's Tim Burke's... I don't know what people do with these, but I know it's his. And so we want you to have that. And then, you know, we've talked, whether it was the annual report, we've talked about how the theme, certainly for the last several years, has been this notion that Apple Valley is to plant... It's a place where you plant, grow, and prosper. Right, Tom? Yes. John and I had a lot of discussions about this. And for all the right reasons and all the projects that Tim was involved in, that it's representative of just who Tim is. And so we have our own poster for your use at home and to remember the work that you do.
Thank you.
Yeah? It's been a pleasure.
Thank you much.
But hold on. Does anybody else want to say anything to him? Absolutely. Go ahead.
Tim, it was a real pleasure to be able to work with you and I appreciate your leadership that you've had. And then, but most of all, the perspective that you brought to you, the various projects and the learning that I was able to take from that. So thank you very much. Well appreciated.
I want to second those notions. And it's been a long time for me up here as well. And, you know, I remember back to the first meetings when I started in the old building, the big projector. The place was like... It seemed like 10 degrees hotter than it needed to be. But over the years, it's been a fun time watching different people come and go and seeing certain individuals kind of stick a little longer than others. But it's nice to see both of those things. It's nice to see fresh views. And it's also nice to have that history of, okay, 10 years ago, this came through and this is why we thought this way. And that makes a lot of... Makes for good use as well. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Tim, it's been a pleasure. I've always enjoyed your perspective, your solid voice of reason for the rest of us, never straying too far from what you thought was the right thing to do. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate the friendship we've had. So I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Well, I've known you for about five years on the board here, but I think I've known you for quite a few years with our children being in the same... Kind of the same grade and everything. But I want to just say thank you personally for welcoming me when I came onto the board. I was kind of treading new waters and didn't really know what I was doing. And you kind of took me under your wing. You're a mentor. I think you should be extremely proud of what you have accomplished. I don't think a lot of people can really comprehend 24 years of volunteer work. You know, a lot of people can't even work at a job for 24 years, more or less volunteering for 24 years. So I commend you on that. You're going to be missed. We're going to miss you up here. And I have big shoes to fill and I don't know that I can fill them. But thank you for your friendship as well.
Thank you.
And enjoy your time off.
I'm sure you can fill them. And I think the one last comment is, I think many of you know that the one role that I filled for a lot of years, I hated the downtime when the outcome was going to be obvious and we were all going to vote for it. And so I was always jumping to make the motion to get it on the floor and get it over with. Because if it's obvious, just don't hesitate. Get the show going so you can have proper time to discuss the things that need discussing.
Good advice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Would everyone just stand up around the screen? And could you go up and join them in the middle? And I think I can get a shot. So we have... Yeah, try to... However it works, I think if everyone brackets in and has the plates on the outside. I think we got this is... Hold on.
Chairs?
We'll chairs just a little bit sideways and it'll be fine. Thank you. Alex and I are competing. Not so much.
It's more of a backup.
Smiles all. Thank you. Did you get some?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Just another angle always is good to get.
Thank you again, Tim, for being here. Thank you, Mr. Bergman. Councilmember Bergman for visiting us.
Okay. Now I got a lump in my throat. Okay. So number six. Brings us to number six. Land use action items. Projecting side are sign ordinance. And that is with...
And Madam Chair, just a reminder, we do have a virtual... We may have a virtual audience or not related to the sign.
Possibly.
Possibly.
As noted, this is a sign ordinance amendment for specifically projecting signs. And I'll define what those are as I move along. So the action this evening is a request for a recommendation of moving this ordinance to city council. The primary reason for that is we do have a business waiting on the ordinance amendment to be able to install a sign. I would note that this is not a public hearing and therefore does not require public input. But as Bruce noted, it would be proper procedure to just ask if there's somebody on and interested. The reason why this is not a public hearing is the sign ordinance does not require public hearings in order to amend that ordinance. It's only the zoning code that would. So your recommended action this evening would be amending Chapter 154 of the city ordinance to define projecting signs and permitting projecting signs within the commercial, industrial, and institutional districts. The draft ordinance does this. So the big question always when we're amending ordinances, why would we want to amend our ordinance? As I noted previously, we do have a business that is coming to town and would like to install the sign that you are seeing on your screen. Projecting signs are those that literally project from the side of a building. Or in this case, we've also defined them for those that are hanging over the top of a pedestrian walkway and are traditionally pedestrian-oriented. They are small. They are not intended as much for off-site advertising, which is what most of our sign ordinance is intended on regulating. And they are good at creating placemaking. One of the benefits and the reason why we are amending the overall sign code is because there isn't necessarily a reason why we need... Why would one restrict these within other zones? We may want to encourage them within some of our plan developments, like the Central Village and Cobblestone, that are more pedestrian-oriented. But there's not a reason why we wouldn't or why we would want to restrict them. Or at least, the planners couldn't see a reason because they are often quite small. One of the provisions of the ordinance actually places the maximum size at eight square feet. So they wouldn't be an off-site view. That's not their purpose. Additionally, the city code does already allow projecting signs within our plan developments. The code in the plan developments is not as robust as this. So we would be potentially going back and making some changes to those plan developments to reflect that. But we've done our homework on this one, used the model side ordinance from the American Planning Association and other cities as our guide. The ordinance provisions, they are outlined in your report. These are the same text from there. So I'm going to go over them relatively quickly. But if there are questions, please feel free to ask. The big deal or one of the questions that is often asked with these signs is where can they be located? The ordinance specifically addresses that, that only... There may only be one per tenant and they must be within 10 feet of the front door. The sign may project no more than four feet. So they aren't meant to be your larger kiosk signs like you see on the older movie theaters or things of that nature. They are more intended for the sign that you saw the example of with Sweet Treadgers. The total sign size, it's restricted to eight square feet. That is relatively small. Our wayfinding signage is only at four square feet. So this is slightly larger as it will be up in the air and does advertise the business, but not substantially larger. Also, the copy area is what's measured on those directional signage. This is the total sign size. So it doesn't matter that if there's a border around it or not. This is the full size of the sign. The signs shall not inhibit pedestrian use of the walkway and they shall not extend into public right-of-way. So they are intended for the developments. Take example, Times Square, for instance, if they were to have something over some of the walkway where it would be over a private sidewalk, not over a public sidewalk, such as in the Central Village, which is consistent with that plan development as well. The actual request this evening, if the planning commission is comfortable with recommending the sign ordinance to the city council, we would move forward to the next available council meeting to move the ability for that applicant to be able to install their sign in the near future. Are there any questions? And I stand for questions.
Commissioner Deekman?
Madam Chair, Alex, what is the minimum height from the sidewalk to the bottom of the sign?
I believe it is 10 feet.
It's 10 feet from the entrance, but I couldn't find a...
I believe it's in Section C, attachment to the building. Less than eight feet above the grade of a walkway.
Less than eight feet?
It shall not be less than eight feet above the grade of the walkway, the bottom edge of the sign.
Okay, thank you.
It is... If you come up from the bottom, it would be five sentences up from the bottom on Section 15404 IC.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? I have a few questions. I think it's a great idea. Why wouldn't this have been approved before?
This is a...
This hasn't come up before?
Commissioner Kurtz, we have it approved in plan developments that are pedestrian-oriented. When our sign code was developed, and one of the things that I was going to update as your communications came out, you'll note at the end of the report, I noted that some of our plan developments still refer to Chapter 6, our old sign code. Our sign code's relatively dated. And we have periodically updated it, but we haven't done a complete overhaul. A complete overhaul would have looked at these types of signs that were not popular when our sign code was created, nor common. And so this is going back and noticing one type of sign that we could add that adds additional availability for our businesses, but hasn't been added to the general sign code while it had been added to the districts that were specifically looking at updating the sign code.
And forgive me if I misread, if I did not read this, but that will never have like neon lights or any kind of lights like that on the sign, right?
Nope, it would not.
Okay. And what was my last question? As I was reading this, As I was reading this, I thought everything was great until I read eight feet. I mean, to me, that's huge. Is that talking about the eight feet from the beginning of it to the, you know, extent of it and stuff?
Eight square feet?
Yeah. Yeah, this is big.
So let's go back to that sign, because I actually did the calculations on this sign as an example. This is a relatively small sign. And where we did it was overall area of eight square feet. I found several different examples between five square feet and up to around 10 square feet. Chose somewhere kind of landing in the middle so that if we get a sign that comes in and notice that it could be problematic and a little too large, we could scale back, but didn't want to have to come forward to amend the ordinance again in the future if we had something at 7.6 square feet that didn't look out of... If you play it, place it higher on the building, for instance, it may need to be a little larger to be at the same visibility for that pedestrian. And that could be a good example of what, say, the AV Mexican Market that you reviewed could do along Galaxy. Now, they're set back a little bit, but they could potentially create that same placemaking by doing a sign like this that wouldn't extend over the public right-of-way, but needs to be a little bit larger because it's going to be a little further back off that public right-of-way in the sidewalk and a little higher on the building. And they aren't proposing that. I'm just coming up with an example of something that's come forward recently.
So the 10 feet from the door that also includes the height of it can't be 10 feet above the door, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. That's in any direction.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Anybody would like to make a motion? Would you like to get this done tonight? Or...
Madam Chair, I recommend amending Chapter 154 of the City Ordinance to define projecting signs and permitting the projecting signs within the commercial, industrial, and institutional zoning districts.
Second.
Okay, so that was moved by Commissioner Schindler and seconded by Commissioner... Sorry, I got that messed up. Scanlon and seconded by Commissioner Schindler. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
One other piece of note that does not have to do with this item of business is that in our review of this ordinance, we did find a lot of the reference to Chapter 6 in our plan developments. That is our old sign code. We have since updated to Chapter 154. So you will see me bringing some larger ordinances to amend those PDs forward in the near future. So you'll have some work that's more of a correction error than it is of substantial value, but we want to bring that forward, and it was part of this process. So wanted to make sure the commission was aware.
And pardon me, I skipped the virtual audience. Can I go back to ask if there is anybody in the virtual audience?
Sure.
Is there anybody in the virtual audience who has any questions?
The chair is on the mic.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. This brings us to number seven, other business. Bruce?
Madam Chair, there is no other business tonight. Just wanted to mention, the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission is scheduled for Wednesday, April 6th. That's 7:00 PM. And the next council meeting is Thursday, March 24th, at 7:00 PM. And those are my updates.
Motion?
Move we adjourn? Second.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Schindler, seconded by Commissioner Scanlon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned.